Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Thursday, May 16 at 9:07, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so as we mentioned at last week's board meeting, based on the work session that the county commissioners had a week ago Tuesday, and what we thought our direction was for our public school funding for the fiscal year 2020 budget, we set this work session on the books, knowing full well that the county commissioners were going to have another work session this past Tuesday. So, things changed again, so with that, I think we have additional different direction than what we had and what we knew of last Wednesday. So I will turn it over to Tammy, who we must thank her and her staff, and everyone who worked very late over the last two evenings in order to pull this together based on what we found out at the county commissioner meeting, and then also from some other revenue sources. So, you're on.
So there was certainly a significant amount of work done over the past 24 hours as a result of the known information on Tuesday. I think Dr. Smith was going to start with her first slide, providing some historical information.
Absolutely. Want to take note that I haven't spoken publicly on this budget since the public work session that was held at Leonardtown High School in April. We weren't afforded an opportunity to speak on this publicly before the deliberative body of the county commissioners. One day was because we were, I was personally tracking down a child that had made their way out, but we did have staff. We had board members in attendance, and certainly our CFO. So I didn't get a chance to make a comment, so I'm gonna, and I've reached, the people have reached out and they wanted me to make a comment, so I've written it down, because I want to make sure that what I say is exactly what I mean, and then afterwards, there'll be something to go back to. For the last couple of weeks, I think we've all been going to bed angry, and I've been waking up in the middle of the night worried, angry and worried. I woke up this morning at about 4 o'clock, and this is what I wrote, so forgive me. This budget doesn't meet all of our needs. Our budgets never have, and they never will. This budget isn't what we requested. We never receive all that we request, and we never will. This budget is the annual compromise we must make when needs and wants meet the reality of funding, local, state, and federal. That's how life works. This budget does meet our priority goal of honoring the negotiated agreement, which means both negotiated agreements, which means that over 2,000 employees will get what they were promised, but most importantly, what they've earned. We requested from St. Mary's County Commissioners $6.7 million over the amount provided last year. A large number. We know it was a large number. There's a chart that shows from 2007 to 2020, how much we asked for, how much we got, how much of an annual increase that was each year. We have a lot of conversations about maintenance of effort, that maintenance of effort is fully funded. Maintenance of effort is a law that precludes the local government from giving the school system less money. That's it. So, we were asking for $6.7 million, and we did, because last year, we got 1.6, only a little 1.5% increase. The year before that, we actually in total received less than the year previous. So, we're in a challenging spot, because historically, going back to 2007, if you average up the annual increases to the school system, on average, the county government has provided about a 4% increase in funding, except for the last three years. And the last three years have actually drawn that down now to 3.9. It's really challenging. The expenses associated with education are not static. You can't spend the same amount of money when we're expected to provide wraparound services for kids. We're supposed to handle anything that they come to us with. We are supposed to make sure that our buildings are secure, that they have buzzen systems and camera systems and all of that, but most importantly, that there are people there. Expenses escalate. On Tuesday, the final funding number was provided for us, our final guidance, which was, and we had to get it from Jeanette Cudmore on a printed-out little tally sheet that she was working as they were talking, $106,242,921. That's an increase of $2.4 million in total over last year, and $3 million over the lowest amount they could by law provide. I do want to take a moment and thank Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Colvin, and President Commissioner Randy Guy for providing more than they were required to by law. They gave us just enough to meet the minimum requirements to receive additional funding through Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and we'll be talking about that later in the presentation. They faced a lot of heat for that, and I can't for the life of me understand why. Our budget will work because three people stood up for us. Who would have thought that would have been a difficult thing? I'm going to leave with a quote, because I love quotes, and then we'll get into all the money. Great quote, sent to me by my wife in the middle of all of this. It's a Greek proverb. It says, "A society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they will never sit." Again, "A society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they will never sit." Education isn't about today. Education is about tomorrow. So with that, we have a budget to present to you, and I will then hand it off to my esteemed colleague.
Who's very tired.
Who's also very tired. Ms. McCourt.
My staff is very tired as well.
Your incredible staff.
All of their hours of work.
You brought in a box of Joe, right?
No.
Unfortunately.
That'll be tomorrow.
No, yes.
So I think it's important that we take just a moment to reiterate a few of the numbers that Dr. Smith mentioned on the prior slide. Your budget, as submitted to the county commissioners, included a request of $110.6 million. That was a $6.7 million increase that you requested. The county commissioners took their public hearing and increased for the school system of $4.4 million. As of Tuesday, the increase to the school system is at $2.3 million, or $106.2 million, to support the Board of Education. To make the balance, the budget balance, we will be utilizing $1.9 million fund balance to cover items submitted in the budget, such as technology and textbooks. And the total increase to our bottom-line budget will be 3.65% over the current fiscal year, for a total of $222 million. This does include the use of Kerwin monies, so that we can meet the negotiated agreement. The three priorities that were originally submitted were the negotiated agreement at $7.9 million, $1.3 million for unfunded mandates for safety and mental health, and $992,000 for recommended enhancements for SMCPs. What is included is the $7.9 million for the negotiated agreement, and many of the other areas have been addressed specifically within safety and security and mental health because of additional grant funding that we have been actively pursuing this year. Once again, the increase that we were requesting to meet priority number one, that we would need from the county government, was $4.4 million. That is what they had taken to their public hearing. What they provided was $2.3 million, which left us a difference of just over $2 million that we had to spend the last 24 hours to try to figure out how to fill that gap, because it was that important for us to meet the negotiated agreement. So of that $2 million delta, we'll be utilizing 1.2, I missed, $1.3 million, and infuse that into the unrestricted fund for the, from the Kerwin monies, for the teacher's salary incentive. We will be removing from the budget $245,000 that has historically been budgeted under fixed charges for accrued compensated absences. Technically, we can't actually use the monies there, and historically, we've been using budgetary savings to fund any accrued compensated absences. The healthcare cost for next year came in at 3.95%. We had actually budgeted 5%. Therefore, we were able to reduce that line by $449,000. And we were able to reduce our retirement budget by $100,000 based on historical trends. We received our last invoice for this year. Therefore, the delta has been covered. As far as positions go, we had originally requested 18.25 unrestricted positions and 18 restricted positions. As a result of our active seeking of grant funding, and the most recent one being the STOP grant for social workers, we were able to reduce that to 4.75 within the unrestricted budget, and increase our reliance on grant funds and fund 31 restricted positions.
And of that 4.75, 3.75 positions are going to the charter school, as they have increased their enrollment as per their MOU with us each year. So we, as a school, as a system outside of the charter school, we're only actually increasing our unrestricted FTE count by one.
I will bring your attention to some of the documents that I left with you on your credenza there. The very first one is an exceptionally detailed layout of exactly where you had submitted your budget, and the changes, and then the final allocation of where all the FTEs, pluses and minuses, are. In addition to that, the second document that you have, and we won't be going through this in great detail today, I'm providing this to you, so if you have any questions as we approach next week's budget session, that you can ask. This document provides all the detailed accounting of any and all changes, pluses and minuses, and infusion of the Kerwin monies. And then the final document provides the line-by-line detail of every single account within the unrestricted fund. And Dr. Smith, I believe that you wanted to speak of the Kerwin.
Yeah, so, there's been a lot of movement just in the last 24 hours on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future Senate Bill 1040. It is a total bill that has, that has associated with it $255 million worth of additional funding to be divvied out to the LEAs across the state of Maryland. The money falls into five different categories, some dealing with early childhood, some dealing with screening for children, some for specifically, some money specifically to pay for the healthcare coordinator that we've already hired, some money for special education. But perhaps the most misunderstood, and/or conversed, and/or talked about, and/or misled about, is the Salary Incentive Grant Program. So the Salary Incentive Grant Program, sorry, is predicated on Kerwin believes, and through all of their work, has found concurrence, teachers are underpaid. Teachers should be making more money. When, there's been a lot of discussions about pay parity, and the one thing that's come out of Kerwin is the level of expertise and education and experience that a classroom teacher, that a classroom teacher needs to be successful in the classroom, an equally compensated position should start around $60,000. That's a, that's a pretty heart-stopping number when you recognize that we start our teachers at $46,500. So that leaves us $13,500 to make up. So, how do you eat that elephant? One bite at a time. The first bite is embedded in Kerwin, and it's a Salary Incentive Grant Program. And how it was originally conceived in mini-Kerwin was, if a county commissioner group or school board can find 1.5% for a COLA, the state would kick in another 1.5, through this, another 1.5%. And that's how they came up with the $75 million that's embedded in this, in this section. As it got worked over and worked over, and balled back and forth, and restricted, and what have you, they came up with specifically the, what you see before you. And if it looks confusing, it's because it is. If you wonder what those numbers on the sides are, that's because every page restarts a numbering that goes all the way through. If you wonder why they hang out everything and they indent crazily, so it doesn't make any sense to somebody who's uses an outline and understands it, that's because, that's just the way it goes. And if you see things italicized and struck through and what have you, that's because all the versions still, still exist, because you can see what they did to get there. So the very first section, 4A, establishes some definitions. What's the salary increase? Who is the teacher they're talking about? And what is the teacher-based salary? In 4B and C, 4B, they name it, it's the Teacher Salary Incentive Grant Program, and 4C says, MSDE is going to run it. 4B also, 4C also says, the intent behind it, which is to recruit and retain. 4D is where they figure out, how are you going to divvy it out? And this is, this is, this is a challenge. This has been modified as it's gone. You can see the strike-throughs and where things are, and the numbering back and forth, but to be able to apply for the grant, we have to, one, tell them how much people are making on average this year. Section two, we have to give them the negotiated agreement or agreed-upon price that they're going to have for next year. Section three, we have to demonstrate what is the total actual salary increase for teachers for 2020 that is proven funded, and that it is at least 3% over what they were making last year, and this is what the county commissioners hung on, and that's why they gave us only the exact amount to meet that requirement. The fourth is, what we're going to do with the money, the proposed use of the salary. And then the fifth is, anything else that we might need to be able to use to see if, if we're eligible. None of this has been determined with a form or a process. This is the only guidance that exists, is what is written in the legislation itself. Yesterday, we were on a conference call, Ms. McCourt, Dr. Walker, and myself, with Rachel Heiss, who is the Senior Policy Analyst at the Department of Legislative Services, and is one of the primary crafters of this language as it went through. And we told her where we were, we told her what our local funding agents did as their interpretation of Kerwin, how they provided just enough funding for 3% for the teachers, and that we intended to use the Kerwin money to backfill. She said that, what was the exact words?
That is absolutely permissible.
That is permissible. If the board so desires, we can reach out to her and have her present that in writing. It would be a reinforcing, but keep in mind, she's the one that's going to determine how this gets divvied out anyway. 4E talks about the fact that once you get it, you should be focusing on teachers in the first five years. What we provided for you in the budget is only a portion of the Kerwin money. There's money left over, and that would be something that we would have to negotiate with the association and talk about. And really, that's a great, that's a great starting point for the larger negotiation that we're going to enter into for the next four years, recognizing that the goal is to have the teachers paid what they deserve. The last is that if you get it in 2020, and you still are funding it in 2021, the grants will be recurring. The last slide is the amount. And I wish that, I wish that when presenting proposed funding, they weren't so specific with an amount unless they were actually, they had actually awarded it, because all of the commissioners, the Maryland Association, Mako.
Maryland Association of Counties.
Counties, they took this number, and they're, they're saying, well, you're guaranteed that money. And as much as we've said, no, we're not, that's where they're coming from. So with this budget, three things. First, with a proposed budget, you, the board, are going to have to agree, in theory, that we know we're going to get $1.7 million in '20. We know that because the governor unfenced the money. He did not sign the bill. And he said Kerwin has not done his job. He was supposed to be rewriting funding formulas, not giving prescriptive grants. But the money is unfenced. So we know that the money is coming for 2020, and we know that there's a mechanism for the money to be there in 2021. But after 2021, there is no guarantee that money will come from the state. The board, in adopting this budget, is agreeing to, first of all, that the money, we are going to be approved for the money, and then, second of all, you're going to pick up the $1.7 million in 2022, because it's your responsibility. It will be baked into and built into everybody's compensation. And it'll be baked into everybody's compensation, because with this budget, let me be very clear, unless something happens at the county funding level again, with this budget, everybody, all ESMC and SMAS staff will receive their full negotiated agreement amounts. For ESMC, that is one step and a 2% COLA, so if you're in the certificated unit, you have 3% between steps. If you're in the ESMC, it's 2.5% between steps. And the COLA, and the, and for SMAS, you receive a step and a, and a 1% COLA. So all of that is in this budget. And we, we've done it by using restricted funds, really on the unrestricted side of the, on the unrestricted side of, side of the board. And I will tell you that, in speaking with, with Ms. Heiss, the intent of the legislation was to reward and encourage counties that were paying their teachers with, and then providing extra money. But it doesn't say that you can't do what we're doing. So even though the intention was that the county would fully fund us at the 4.4 we requested, and this would be additional money, that's just not the reality of where we find ourselves. We were only given, we asked for 6.7, we were told 4.4, and we ended up with 2.3. But at the end of it, we're able to make it work, and it's not pretty, but it does work. You have all these documents in front of you? And I, we got these documents to you in the morning. You walked in to have these in hard copy, so I apologize for that. We usually try to get this to you well in advance, but we were still working on this late into the day yesterday, because basically, we, you know, the accounting behind this is, well, certainly something that I would never be able to explain to you, but certainly Tammy would, with spreadsheets and graphs.
Thankfully, we have the next week to review this, because we won't vote on this until next week.
This is not right. There's not consensus seeking here or voting here, this is just telling you what we, what we've done so far.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Tammy, can you go back to the summary slide that shows that we used the 1.9 million in fund balance? Just so everyone is clear. Okay, so the 1.9 million in fund balance, that is what, that, the way I understand it, is our estimated fund balance at the end of this fiscal year.
That's correct.
Fiscal year '19.
That's correct.
And that is primarily due to the healthcare savings that we received.
And, and salary savings.
Correct. And so of our total expenditures, we, what, so we ran 1% under what our projected expenditures were for the year.
That's correct.
Which is what accounts for that 1.9.
As of.
For everyone out there that says we all buy money.
Right. As of this week in May.
Right.
When we are projecting end-of-year balances, and we still have time to get through, but we're, money's encumbered and what have you, we believe that within a $230 million budget, we are going to be on about 99%, and about 1% to the good. So that's going to be about $2 million of fund balance.
Right. Which seems like a large dollar number, but when you look at the big scheme of things and the percentage against the volume of our budget, it really isn't.
Yeah.
It's like having $100 in your checking account and writing a check for $99.
Correct. And I'm sure, if I see Dr. Jaffers back there nodding, I'm sure he could do some type of analytics to, and a great, and a great chart about that, if we need to. Okay, so now my second one is on the slide that you mentioned, the healthcare, the $500,000 that we took out of that account in projected expenditures for fiscal year 2020. Right? Yeah, 449, sorry, I rounded up. Okay, so that, so initially, when we built, or when you guys built the budget in January, February, the word from CareFirst was it was going to be 5%.
The estimated 5%.
Based on what the claims were at that point in time, through that time-to-date. So everyone, keep in mind, CareFirst continually updates on a quarterly basis.
Right.
Correct, as to what your projections may be. And as we've done in years past, we have adjusted if we needed to, based on what the latest number was that came in. So that's why it was, that's why the movement from the 5% to the 3.95%.
So we had originally done a 1.5, and it's going to only be 1.
Correct. Okay, then, just once again, so everyone's clear on the restricted/unrestricted movement on that side? So since we are going to use Kerwin money that is going to come in from a grant from MSDE, right? And it's only specifically for.
Early childhood, special education, salary incentives.
Mental health coordinator.
Mental health coordinator, and we weren't, we weren't eligible for the community schools.
Not till next year.
Not till next year.
Right. Okay, so, just so no one is panicked about jobs moving or leaving, this is simply an accounting side, because now, for those people that Dr. Smith just mentioned that fall into those buckets, their additional salary money that we're going to use to backfill the budget is going to come from the Kerwin money. So we have to keep it separate on the balance sheet, or income statement, in order to make sure that we can account for all of that money, and it's not mixed into the big pile of, of money that, it's not mixed into the pot. So that's why on these sheets, you see all the movement from restricted to unrestricted for principals, or, you know, whoever. So anyone who is under the ESMC contract that is not, does not fall into one of those buckets, that's why we had to make the other budget adjustments, in order to ensure that they received their portion of the negotiated agreement. All clear?
So, we've given you a lot to digest. The biggest thing we wanted to get out there today was that we have figured a way to make the budget work, so that people are going to be given what they were promised and have earned. Because I know that a lot of people walked away a little bit shattered, well, certainly shattered last week, and then certainly today, or Tuesday, yeah. We are going to be able to honor the negotiated agreement. That is the primary focus of all of our work, and that is exactly what we're going to be able to do with this budget. I do want to finish, because it seems, I don't, I don't know if everybody understands this. Taxes, they have proposed a tax increase on income tax to 3.17%. I don't know that necessarily people are going to notice that. I don't even know necessarily how to calculate that. It's based on how much you earn. So, but that's not, that's not going to be something that you, oh my gosh, look at that. The other side that was proposed was an increase in property tax, real property tax. This county has not raised property taxes, I believe, this century. For comparison, and I think it needs to be made, we are basically tied for the fourth lowest in the state, okay? 84.7 cents, we'll round it up to 85, so it's easier. We're fourth lowest in the state. Queen Anne's, Worcester, and Talbot have lower rates. And really, Worcester and Queen Anne's, we're tied with them, okay? Talbot is only at 57 cents. If we raised the taxes as proposed, we wouldn't have moved our ranking. We would still be under Anarundel. It would generate almost $8 million worth of income annually to the, to the county. The average homeowner on a $200,000 home would see an increase of about $118.
A year.
A year. So a little, $10 to $12 a month. I know we heard from realtors, they got up and they said, if you raise taxes, people are going to. are going to move. And I should have gotten up afterwards and said, where are they going to move? Because if they're going to move to Charles, it's 95 cents. If they're going to move to, I'm sorry, Charles, it's $1.14. If they're going to move to Calvert, it's 95 cents. Now, they could move to Queen Anne's, they could move to Worcester, or they could move to Talbot. Talbot's really the only place that they could move. Talbot is a lovely place. Talbot also has the lowest per pupil allocation in the state of Maryland. Nobody spends less than Talbot. Now, we used to hold that mantle, but with the funding that we've received over the last several years, we've inched up, and for that, I'm thankful. And before I finish, I want to say again, I am, I am thankful for Todd Morgan and Eric Colvin and Randy Guy standing up and saying, we have to at least get them enough money to get to Kerwin, to get it all to work. They put a huge burden on our shoulders, but they did at least stand up for us. And for that, I'm really thankful. Because as of Tuesday of last week, when that went back and forth, we, we couldn't have come up with a plan. We couldn't have done anything. We would have, we would, we would have been in the worst-case scenario that we could have been in, and evidently, that seems to be some place that some people want us to I hope people don't move to Talbot. I hope they stay here. We do have the fourth lowest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. So when somebody tells you your taxes are too high, you know, and we're not raising them this year, I understand, but don't think you can have the top, well, we're second from the top performing. Our graduation is 94.3, which is not tops in the state, it's second. You can't have the second highest performing school system in the state of Maryland and be racing down to the bottom with Talbot. So with that, I conclude my remarks, but I would like to say again the quote. Maybe I'll put this on my email address so that every time I say, people do that, the little quotes on the bottom. I never really have gotten into the habit of doing that, but I love this because basically I'm in the category of old men now. Who knew? "A society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they shall never sit." Education and educational funding is not about today, it's about tomorrow. And I will tell you, we're spending the whole month of May recognizing our incredible kids and their accomplishments, and Signing Day at the Tech Center and all the, tonight, we're going to recognize 250 kids for their exemplary things. The future is really bright. I encourage everybody to be part of it. Thanks.
All right. Does anyone have anything else?
One question. Security hasn't been affected at all on this new budget?
We have safety and security included in this budget.
I'm sorry?
We do have safety and security included in this budget.
Yes. So I will tell you that thanks to Mrs. Bailey's work on the advisory, are you the sub-cabinet or the advisor?
Oh, I'm the advisory board. I'm not, I'm not important enough to be the sub-cabinet.
On the advisory board, we get all the information about the grants and as they're coming out, and we are positioning ourselves to be able to competitively write for them, which we are. So the majority of things that we saw on that safety and security sheet, we're going to be able to meet the coordinator position and the healthcare coordinator. And you're going to hear on Wednesday about the STOP grant that we co-wrote with Dr. Brewster in the Health Department that's going to get, not to give, not to give it away, but it's too great to keep. It's eight, it's eight licensed clinical social worker positions that we're going to be able to deploy across our secondary schools, which is even more that was on, than was on that second sheet. And we did that because we have a great partnership with the Health Department, and we were able to very quickly respond to money. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of exceptionally good people working on behalf of kids and figuring out a way to get it done.
Thank you very much for your hard work in making this work so we could honor the negotiated agreement. Thanks to you, Mrs. McCourt, Dr. Smith, and, and Dr. Walker, and everyone else who helped. Thank you.
And the finance staff.
The whole finance staff and finance.
All finance.
If I've been there, we have to recalculate and blow everything up in a matter of a few hours, so I feel you.
So you'll get, so next week, when we come forward, we'll have the full budget book, and we'll do a full presentation with everything reconciled and where, where we all stand, assuming that, so Tuesday for the county commissioners is, that's when they actually vote.
That's correct.
They had consensus, and they gave us final direction on Tuesday, but it isn't voted in yet. It won't be voted in until Tuesday. So, and then we go on Wednesday, and then it goes back to them by the next day so that we can all come together and reconcile all the amounts in June.
Okay. So next board meeting, as Dr. Smith referred to, is next Wednesday at 6 o'clock. So we'll save everyone there. Right on.